Well, hello, everybody, and welcome this evening. It's wonderful to see so many of you here in the audience for this special night for the city of Boise. We're going to go ahead and start with an invocation, which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is the roll call. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
And next up, we have a request for approval of the minutes from the strategic planning session and regular day meeting of December fourteenth.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of December fourteenth, the strategic planning session and the evening meeting. Second.
We have motion of second clerk, we call the roll.
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion to amend the January fourth agenda. I move that we pull resolution twenty twenty-two from the consent agenda for consideration at a later date. There were some papers that were not completed yet, and I also moved that we defer resolution thirty-one twenty-two to a date certain of January eleventh due to a delay with documents.
Second.
Up to second, council president. We can't.
Twenty or twenty-two?
Okay, just to clarify, I thought I said resolution twenty-two twenty-two.
Oh, twenty.
In the first.
Yep, okay, so resolutions twenty-two twenty-two and thirty-two.
Thirty-one twenty.
Thirty-one, yep, the home one, okay.
Thank you.
So was this a motion to approve the consent agenda with those pulled?
To, yeah, to remove the one and defer the other one till January eleventh.
Okay.
Second.
We have, clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, and now we have the rest of the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the two changes previously made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could just briefly, there's one resolution on the consent agenda for consultant to carry through the work of the resolution that the council passed earlier on diversity, equity, inclusion. I would like to thank the mayor's office for carrying that work forward and look forward to seeing the outcome of it. And also look forward to recognizing or understanding as a city council how we can create a parallel process for ourselves. And want to always continue to recognize council member Sanchez's very deep interest in this subject.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing on first reading, so we'll move on to second reading where we have one ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD dash fifty-eight dash twenty-one, an ordinance CAR two-one dash zero 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 two zero, Boise Independent School District and Boise City Airport. For property located at eight-three-seven-three West Victory Road, annexing one hundred and twenty-eight acres. And for property located at six-seven-five-five West Victory Road, annexing four-point-two-five acres of certain land and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City. Establishing determining the land use classification of said one hundred and twenty-eight acres as A dash one A open land and annexing four-point-two-five acres as M dash one D light industrial with design review. Setting forth a reason statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission. Providing that a copy of said legal description map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
And next up, we have one on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ordinance fifty-nine twenty-one be dispensed with and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion and a second clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD dash fifty-nine dash twenty-one, an ordinance admitting Title eleven, Chapter three, Section four, Subsection twenty, Boise City Code to include new language addressing unpermitted work in historic districts and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance fifty-nine twenty-one be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And now we'll move on to special business, the reason that everybody's actually here this evening. First off, the bittersweet event of wishing council member Thompson farewell. And, you know, I just want to say that we talked, we made the resolution in December, but again, just really appreciate your service stepping down after three terms where you've championed animal rights, Cottonwood Park, so many other things. Childhood health and just really appreciate and will remember the service that you provided this city and of course, the partnership we've had. And then I want to pass it over now to the council president.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So TJ, tonight is a bittersweet night. We've served together for all of your time here. And the mayor is absolutely right, your passion on childhood care issues, on making sure that parks all over the city were improved in ways that the children in various parts of the city had good access to those facilities and as well as the adults. And finally, your deep passion and commitment to ensuring that the city of Boise have the most up-to-date animal ordinances in the state of Idaho, perhaps in many cases around the nation. And I just thoroughly enjoyed working with you on all of those and look forward to the legacy that those three things leave for the city of Boise. And with that, we've got a couple of things that we'd like to give to you. So. As part of the animal ordinance, council member Thompson asked that in places where lots of dogs were going to be getting out of cars on the hot pavement, that we warn that the pavement was hot and that paws could get burned. So that we'd have less of those kinds of accidents in our parks. This is an example of the signs that are going to go up around the city at those parks, and this is one that council member Thompson gets to keep. So secondly, council member Thompson was always a champion of children. And part of that was ensuring that the parks around the city, especially in West Boise, were improved in ways that we envisioned but hadn't been completed yet. And before I present this, I'd like to note that one of the last things that we got to vote on last year in council member Thompson's last active session was an amendment to our childcare ordinance, which he brought forward early in his tenure to ensure that childcare regulations in the city were top-notch. Allowing a waiver so that in this time when it's so difficult to find childcare workers, we could get childcare workers up and running even while ensuring that it was safe to let them do so while some of the paperwork and some of the last of the checks were being done. And so, thank you for that. One of the other things council member Thompson did was investigate not just Cottonwood Park, but parks around the city for the ones that had been longest without amenities. Amenities that really serve kids, especially in the case of Cottonwood Park, an accessible playground that had the first zip line in the city. And so with that, we'd like to present council member Thompson with a framed picture of Cottonwood Park and the playground that he worked so hard to get.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, those of you who followed us this last year know that council member Thompson worked hard to bring forward an ordinance that was really the best in the city or best in the state of Idaho. But really, as I've looked around the country, one of the best in the country at protecting animals in the city of Boise. It's hard to do something that really shows how important that was. This is a small gesture of making sure that it is not forgotten. So this is a plaque that council member Thompson will get to keep, but it will be replicated on a dog watering station at Cottonwood Park. So that forever people will know that TJ Thompson, dedicated council member, served the residents of Boise from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-one. And that this plaque is in recognition of his support for city parks, including making the Cottonwood Park Playground inclusive for all and for his work protecting animals throughout the city. Congratulations.
Thank you. Wow, that's really, really special. Thank you so much to my colleagues and, and I mean, I thought you couldn't outdo December fourteenth when you caught me by surprise and made it my own day in two thousand twenty-one. So these are the most treasured things, as you know, you know me well, that I'll remember each of these items and it just means a lot. I have, I do have some prepared remarks I'm going to give and well, it's, it's crazy. Here we go, you know, the last twelve years have been actual absolute honor of my life, serving you in what I feel is the greatest city in America. And above all else, I want to thank my drop-dead gorgeous and talented wife of eighteen years, Alicia, for encouraging me and supporting me throughout the last twelve years in office. It's hard to believe that I have served in office longer than we've actually even been together. All the campaigns and additional spotlight it put on our family, the hundreds of nights away from city hall, ribbon cutting, speeches, fundraising, and so much more. And I know you, Alicia, have supported me for as, it would have supported me for as long as I wanted to do this. And I full-heartedly married a woman with eternal patience and understanding. That's what it takes when you, your spouse is in politics. In December twenty twenty, I announced that I wouldn't pursue a fourth term, and it was for one reason, and she's sitting in the audience with my wife. My seven-year-old daughter, Sina, said one word to me when I was heading off to what was going to be a late night at city hall. Another night, I wouldn't see her off to bed. She said, stay. That changed everything, and I look forward to staying with you, Sina, and mom, and soma dog, Luna cat, on Tuesday nights and many other nights going forward. I had the privilege of working with some of the greatest directors, city personnel, police officers, and firefighters in all of America. With folks like those working here in city hall, it really makes governing look easy. I had the honor of serving with some of the best and brightest people I have ever met. Bern Bestrefeld, who kindly referred to me as the silver-tongued devil. Helen Shealy, David Everly, Mary Ann Jordan, whom this council chamber is named after. My good friends Ben Quintana and Scott Ludwig, long-serving mayor Dave Veder, and of course, my current colleagues. I'll start first with President Elaine Clegg, someone that became to me one of the most respected people I have ever had the honor to know. I am forever your greatest ally. Thanks for putting up with me. Thank you for your guidance. You taught me more than you will ever know. And accurately stated by the former mayor Elaine is the conscience of our city. And I thought it was only fair that each of my colleagues be identified with a term I think that best describes them. So Pro Tem Lisa Sanchez, a good friend dating back decades, fellow student body president at Boise State University. A caring and compassionate soul, bringing a voice to individuals that were not being heard and saying the difficult things that must be said. Lisa is the heart of our city. Holly Woodings, the only person I know who can be both caring and fierce as hell in the same meeting. As long as you serve, the city will be in good hands. A self-proclaimed policy geek with the persistence and determination to see anything through success. Holly is the tenacity of our city. Jimmy Halliburton, he will run into a burning building for you, stop on a dime and repair your tire from one of those devil goat heads in ten seconds flat and probably wrestle a mountain lion to the ground to save a bird. Our city is lucky to have your kindness, assessing every decision at city hall, Jimmy. Jimmy is the pulse of our city. Patrick Bajent, seriously, one of the brightest people I've ever met. I call him Goodwill, not just because he looks like Matt Damon, but because he embodies the character and smarts of Goodwill Hunting. He dissects a policy discussion like a master brain surgeon, and we are lucky to have you. Patrick is the mind of the city. And my mayor, Lauren McLean, you lead with devotion, heart, passion, and love for the city. You're a leader devoted to doing what is fair, right, and in the best interest of all the citizens you represent. You have probably faced more challenges in your first two years than any in Boise's history and have handled each with a steady, steady hand. Madam Mayor, you are the strength of our city. And if you'll indulge me a bit, I hope I brought some worthwhile passion to the city in my last twelve years. Also, I want to thank Amanda Brown. Where's Amanda? Out there. She is the chief of staff for the Boise City Council. That's like herding cats, man. She knows I'm not one for making incremental changes. When I tackle an issue I'm passionate about, I want it all changed in one fell swoop. That makes for quite a bit of work for someone already assisting five other council members, but she handles it like a pro. Amanda, thanks for keeping me in line and keeping me straight when I was astray and helping me navigate the waters to get big things passed. You rock, Amanda. Thank you. Lastly, I want to thank the most important folks of all, and that's Boise citizens. You sent me back to city hall in a strong way three times, and each time I kept my promises to you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. I also want to congratulate Lucy Willis on her outstanding victory and wish you, Lucy, all the luck in the world in your future with the city of Boise. As one of your West Boise citizens that you will now represent, I look forward to all that you will achieve on our behalf. To your understanding husband, Mike, sorry, but Tuesday day nights are hereby officially over, brother. In closing, at the end of the day, I hope you remember me for just a few things. While I was part of many decisions that have helped craft our city into what it looks like today, in very large part because of the colleagues I've served with. It will be the work I personally spearheaded over the last twelve years that I'll cherish the most, and each of those were spoken about, so I won't get into them again. But it has been an absolute honor being a part of all those with you. And the sign is beautiful. Your, your, your office of community engagement mayor did an outstanding job and picked a great dog for the photo, too, I've got to say. It's truly an honor. I have one last thing before I rid you of myself on the dais, but I wanted to make sure if there was anyone else that had anything to say, then please go ahead before I give my last remarks.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I had the good fortune of meeting you TJ through our mutual friend Nicole, Nico Martinez, now Negrete. And what I love about that first meeting with you was the sight of you. You are wearing a silver puffer jacket with a baseball cap to the side, and I believe your rap name was Adrenaline Rush. And I love that. I love the fact that I met you because of Nico. And Nico was the person you chose to be your vice president when you were at ASBSU. And to me, that, that is exactly what I want to see in our leaders. I want to see our leaders not talking about how they're going to serve, for example, the Latinx community. But how they're going to make room for us at the leadership table. And that's who you've been. You have not spoken about the good work. You've done the good work. And I will miss you very, very much. Because when you walk into a space where it feels like no one knows you, people are wondering how you got there. To have one person who can go, I know her, I know why she's here. And thank you for being not just a wonderful representative for our city, but thank you also for being a wonderful and loving colleague. Thank you TJ, and I will miss you so much.
Madam Mayor. Those were wonderful words, council president Pro Tem. I sadly missed TJ's rap days of puffer jackets. But I do remember in two thousand eight seeing TJ for the first time up on the stage at the Morrison Center for the Ada County Democratic Caucus, the first year that Obama ran. And he had so much energy and was so exciting. And it was like, oh, okay, you know, I was pretty new into politics in Idaho at the time, but I thought, you know, if young people like this guy are in politics, you know, maybe there's a place for me in politics, too. And it was, it was very cool just seeing you in that space and really embodying it. Fast forward to two thousand fourteen, TJ and I were both running uphill battles for seats that we were unlikely to win in, you know, various places. And I still remember TJ's kindness after we both lost. I think I was a little bit more heartbroken for your loss than I was my own and a little bit more surprised. But just the compassion that he showed me, you know, while he had suffered the same fate was really telling about his character. And then being able to serve alongside TJ in the city we both love, even though we live basically on different sides of the city. We both have a deep love for Boise, and so it's been really wonderful to serve alongside you, serve the city we love from across town. And I look forward to play dates at Cottonwood Park, and I hope that you're not a stranger. And I look forward to play dates at Cottonwood Park, and I hope that you're not a stranger as you get your Tuesday nights back. Thank you so much, TJ. I loved serving alongside you.
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Thompson, I'm really excited for you today. I'm excited for you to get to spend more time with your incredible family. I think what we've talked about so far is sort of this highlight reel of all the things that Councilmember Thompson has done for our city. And that highlight reel is really important, and all those, all those big things are really significant. But I think sometimes it's some of the small things that people do that really define their character. And I want to share just kind of my own experience with you. I've had the opportunity to serve with you up here for two years, but I've known you for much longer than that. And I remember, like Councilmember Woodings, being a young person in this community, seeing you up here and realizing that a 30-year-old could be making big decisions and doing big things for the city, and it was really, really inspiring. And I remember sitting out in the audience, and I remember you listening with curiosity to every single thing that everybody had to say. And I remember one very specific moment where at the end, when it came time to make a decision, and you talked like we always do at the end, and you had said that you had changed your mind from what you had previously thought about a specific topic because of the public's testimony. And as a young, you know, in their twenties organizational leader who thought that they knew everything, that was a really, really important lesson that I learned about how it's never too late and how it's courageous to change your mind and to be willing to listen to everybody in a way that allows you to be influenced and to learn and to grow. And that might seem like a really small thing that just happened at one meeting, but that's something that I took forward with me with my career, both at the Boise Bicycle Project, and that I'll try to carry on for you here as a city council member. I am going to try to pay you back for your description, each of our council members here. If I could think of one word to describe you, TJ, and it was perfectly captured in the speech that you just gave, is authentic. TJ is TJ. You always will be, and you are the authenticity of our city, and I want to thank you for being that for all these years. Thanks, buddy.
Madam Mayor. TJ, thanks. I mean, thanks for mentoring me, for showing people how to be a dignified, kind, thoughtful. Councilmember Halliburton stole one of my compliments. I've seen you change your mind, and I've learned from that. But I also want to recognize your service to our country in the United States Air Force, your service to this city for 12 years, your service to your family, your service to many, many people in this community who frankly don't get the attention and the care that they deserve, your service to its animals. I met TJ Thompson vaccinating dogs in the snow for people who couldn't afford vaccines. There were cats there as well. And I just really want to thank you for sitting next to me and being warm, friendly, and thoughtful, and really for showing me the way on how to do this very difficult job. I'm going to miss you tremendously. I'm going to hunt you down and find you and sit down and enjoy some laughs with you, but, but I really, from the bottom of my heart, like everyone here, I'm going to miss seeing you every week. I wish you the best, and I hope you enjoy your time with your family. In some ways, I envy them a little bit. How do you like them apples, TJ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Beyond the things that we did to honor you, TJ, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the really kind words that you said about me, but more importantly, I'd like to give them back to you because I also learned a lot from you. I learned how to work with someone who was so passionate that they knew they had to get something done and help them figure out how to make that happen. And in doing so, I had to figure out how to make that happen, and so I learned so much from that. But most importantly, I'd like to recognize that although TJ always had a special place in his heart for the part of the city that he lives in, he came to the city to serve everyone and serve the whole city. And I think even as we go into this era where we have council districts, how important that is, how important it is to recognize that we are a whole city. We're not parts. And the parts together make that city a better city, not those parts separately. And you embodied that despite or as you also very much advocated for the part of the city that you lived in. So thank you for that example. I hope it's one that carries forward.
Thank you so much again to my amazing colleagues that I've had. The daughter's been all mine to be able to serve with. People of your caliber. It's just unbelievable that I had this experience. So goodbye, but before I step down from the dais, and also, I hope that's the last time I ever hear of my rap days at Bogies. That wasn't a very successful career, for me at least. Before I step down from the dais, I leave you with one song that I hope sums up my time here. Almost eight years ago, I adopted a dog that became my favorite furry family member. She was a rescue from a hoarder, one of 61 dogs that was living in an extremely small living environment. Dogs were stacked on top of each other, buried in their own feces. Several died, but most were saved by Sonoma Humane Society. My pup was one of them, so we named our saved pup Soma from Sonoma. She acquired diabetes a few years ago, lost her sight within weeks as a result of the the full cataracts. She gets along great now. She's doing very well. Animal hoarding, though, is animal cruelty, and now treated as such in our code because of Soma from Sonoma. So as I leave office, I dedicate a final tune to her. She changed the city for animals through me. Thank you again to my wife, my daughter, and my dog. This goes out to my best friend. Let me introduce one of our outstanding local musicians and artists whom I encourage you all to follow on social media and seek out whenever she is playing at one of our many fine local Boise venues. Please give it up for Ashley Rose.
Thank you so much, TJ. I'm honored to be here, both as a citizen in Boise and a dog lover. I remember learning of the city ordinance's changes that protected animals several years ago and being impressed by that as it impacts creatures that I love. So I was so delighted when you asked for me to come here and sing for you today.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you so much, Ashley Rose. Goodbye.
Well, thank you again, TJ, and congratulations on this next chapter. And now we're going to swear in our new council members. Those that city Boise residents said ought to be up here making decisions for the next two years because we're moving into districts. So we have, first, we'll go in order. So first, seat one, Lucy Willetts. Seat three, Lisa Sanchez, and then seat five, Holly Woodings. And I just want to say, this is, I still remember the first time I stood up here, Lucy, as you come up for the first time. It was actually in the depot at that point. But what a unique experience it is and an incredible honor to know that you've been trusted by your friends, your neighbors, your family, your fellow residents of this great city to serve. And so I want to congratulate the three of you on terms and look forward to working with the three of you. But with that, I'll ask Uker Bedekey if you'd come on up right here with and join Councilmember-elect Willetts and her family to administer the oath of office. I think it goes on automatically, maybe. I do solemnly swear. That I withhold, that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Idaho. And I will faithfully discharge my duties. As a council member in the city of Boise. To the best of my ability, so help me God. Well, TJ did such a remarkable job with his remarks that were prepared. Mine or not, they're from the heart, but nevertheless tender as well. First of all, thank you, TJ. Thank you to your family. It's so much work. I'm just getting a taste of that. And we need to honor those who are willing to serve. So thank you. I can appreciate the time that you want to spend with your family. And, you know, I said this during the campaign, but one of the reasons that I ran was that I was becoming an empty nester because I knew what this would take. First of all, you know, it's me up here, but there are 10 people out there that are here accompanying me as friends and family. But even more than that, there are hundreds of people who helped me get here. You know, it's just not me standing here. It's hundreds of people behind me who did so much work to make this happen, and I am grateful to them. I am thankful to them. Everyone on this podium has run for office, and they know how hard it is. And I, you can't do it alone, and you're not just, you're not just you. You're a whole team, and I'm grateful for that team. I'm also grateful for my family, who helped me every step of the way to be here today and my extended family that's not able to be here. You know, we are in so much who, where we come from, but also who we surround ourselves with. And there are many people in my life that aren't here, but I know that are here in spirit, who aren't here physically or even on this earth, but I'm, I know that they're here today. You know, I love this community. It's why I ran. We have an amazing community full of heart, full of warmth, and full of challenges. And it takes good people who want to run and who want to help engage in those challenges. I am grateful to the current city council folks for their warm welcome, for the New Kid on the Block. I do not have any rap ability nor any musical inclination, but I do like a good 1990s band. So I'll slip in the New Kids on the Block. Reference Step by Step, their best song. So thank you for your warm welcome. I've had a great, a great introduction. We all live here because we love it, and it's that heart that keeps us a community. And it's the people that make a community. It's not just the geography. But I do think that we are special, and there's a reason why people are moving here, is because they want what we have. They want a safe community. They want a community that takes care of each other. You know, my, my political hero Ronald Reagan talked about America being the shining city on the hill, and I think Boise is the shining city amongst the hills. And I look forward to serving it, serving the people of West Boise, and ensuring that we have a place for all in Boise. Thank you. All right, Lisa, if you'll please raise your white, right hand. I, Lisa Sanchez.
I, Lisa Sanchez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
For the city of Boise City.
The city of Boise City.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the honor of administering the oath at me so much. I first would like to thank my brother Candy Ortiz and my nephew Nicholas Ortiz for traveling from Nampa in the snowstorm to be here to represent our family. Thank you so much for doing that. And as proud as I am of being able to represent our city for another two years, to represent District Three, I am incredibly proud of my nephew for receiving his letter from Boise State saying that he is welcome to attend the university. So finally, a legacy. But now I hear it might be ASU. We'll see. We'll do our, we'll do our part. It, there are times when I sit and I think back about how I got here, and And my favorite part about ruminating on that is thinking about all the people that it took for me to be the one standing in front of you. It took Charity Strong, my campaign manager, whose name fits her perfectly, by the way. I met Charity at Boise State University as I was completing my degree, and she very generously offered to tutor me in math so I could finally get that diploma. Thank you, Charity. And she has consistently been that person. When I am pursuing a goal, she has offered up her friendship and service. So thank you, Charity, for again helping us with this campaign. I also see my friend Asa Nims, who also helped chart a path for me. Asa and I met at Boise State at Towers Hall. He was the only white guy in a group of Mexicans. He was my TJ. And he was also the first person to let me know about the racism that existed at my university. And it must have been very hard for him to share that information with me because it came from a mutual friend. And rather than get upset about it, I realized that just as it's up to Boise State University to help our students who graduate from high school unprepared to do college-level math. And then when they get to the university, they have to be, they have to pay for remedial courses until they get up to the, up to speed, till they can graduate with that degree. It is also up to the university to prepare our students to be good members of this community where they learn how to interact with the public, with their colleagues, with their neighbors, with dignity and respect. And so Asa, thank you so much for being brave all those years ago and giving my life a purpose. And also for being the graphic artist for my campaign. Thank you. There's a number of people in this room today who I have similar stories of where their willingness to bring forward and speak up has helped me, has helped me on this path. And I also want to thank every single person who decided to point out a flaw or where I have fallen short. You have been very helpful to me as well because that's the only way we can get better, is if we know that there is an area where we need to focus on and we need to improve. And it is one of the hardest things for us to do, is to, is to hear that feedback that is not always positive. It's not always applause. It is a finger pointed in your face. And so I thank you for that as well because what you've done is you've also reminded me it is a privilege and an honor to serve in this role. And that anytime somebody criticizes us, it's because they love their community and they just want us to do better. So I'm hoping as, as I move forward into the next two years, that I, that I do a better job than the one that I've done over the past four years. And but if there's something I'd like to leave you with, it's never for one minute think that I take this opportunity for granted. There are times when I have become very outspoken in how I feel about the status quo. And there are times when the focus has been on that outspokenness rather than the issue. And so that is an area where I'm gonna try to do better because I never want it to be about the messenger. I want it to be about the message and how we can improve our community together. So please do everything you can to help identify people in other parts of Boise who would be good members of our council in the coming years because we are going through a transition right now. And we have had our city divided up into districts, something that the people of Boise did not have a say in. Well, they do have a say in going forward. Help identify those people. I did not realize how scared people are to run for office. I had no idea. It's probably a good thing. As they say, sometimes ignorance is bliss. I didn't realize that this is the, somebody's worst nightmare is having to run for office. And even a bigger nightmare to actually win and have to serve. But I tell you, over the past four years, I have met brilliant people, good-hearted people, the kind of people that we described tonight in our, in our colleague Councilman Thompson. But they're too afraid to run because of the hateful rhetoric that we all experienced during this last campaign. Do not let that deter you. Your community needs you. Please step forward. Run for office. Run for one of these seats in 2023. We absolutely need you. I didn't anticipate that that's, that I would have a call to action during the speech, but, but it is important. And so as community members, we need to help identify those folks because clean water is not Republican, it's not Democrat, it's a human need. Shelter, it's a human need. Food accessibility, it's a human need. Having a safe environment to raise our children, it's a human need. And so please get out there, identify those people, help them win those races in 2023 so that we can continue to do good work on behalf of everybody in the City of Boise. Thanks for the second chance.
Right, you raise your right hand. Hi, Holly Woodings.
Hi, Holly Woodings.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
As a council member.
As a council member.
Perform the duties expected of me for the City of Boise.
Perform the duties expected of me for the City of Boise.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone, for being here among our latest foray with the Greek alphabet. And I think that everybody's sick right now. I know I have several family members who couldn't be here tonight because they were touched by COVID. But I do have my close, immediate family here who just mean the absolute world to me. My daughter Mary, my son Arthur, and my husband Ryan, as well as some fierce women who have always had my back, which I appreciate very, very much. It really takes a lot of people to help someone run for office and help someone win office. I often joke that it's like a marketing campaign in the middle of the nerdiest job that someone can possibly do, where you don't really have anything flashy to talk about, but you really have to make it look great and exciting and make it look like you're the most wonderful person on the planet, even though you don't do anything that's really sexy. Somehow, people know how to make that actually look great and make people excited about it. And so I really appreciate the folks who gave me their time, talent, and treasure to help me win reelection. And I wasn't really sure how reelection was going to go because this is our first time running in council districts. I've made a lot of really tough decisions that impact this district that I now serve. And I was not sure how people were going to feel about some of those decisions and if they were going to choose to send me back to this dais to continue to make hard decisions, to continue to weigh every single piece of testimony, every single piece of factual evidence, every piece of strategic intention that our city has in order to make the best decisions that we possibly can for our residents, for our businesses, for our neighbors, and for the bright, bright, brilliant future of our city. So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I look forward to serving you for two more years. And as always, feel free to reach out. I think that this is the most accessible level of government that there is. I know everyone at this dais wants to hear from each and every one of you about how we can best make decisions on your behalf and serve the future of our city. So thank you so much. Well, congratulations. And now with that, we have one piece of business to do before we end the evening, and that is the election of council president and council president pro tem.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move. Let's see, how do we do this? I would like to make a motion to nominate Elaine Klag for president. And I would also like to make, in that same motion,